Madam Chair, I call the rule for today's regular session, April 12, 2021. Honorable Alura Virginia M. Monte Presiding, Honorable Tito V. Dicina, Honorable Elsa F. Navarro, Honorable Emityo B. Rowa Senior,
Present.
Honorable Hendry Beestano,
Here.
Honorable Dimisho de La Hilaia Senior, Honorable Lel M. Blanco,
Aye.
Honorable Ruby Di Alla,
Present.
Honorable Winston Di Catane, Honorable Rosanne Marie Pelaga Liam,
Present.
Honorable Agnes S. Villanueva, Honorable Eduardo C. Cebedo, Honorable Sancho E. Manuel Jr.,
Present.
Honorable Alicia A. Di Pa'o, and Honorable Juanita D. M. Vinya. Your Honor, we have 11 members present.
We have 11 members present out of 15, so corum is served by declaring. Majority Floor Leader.
Honorable Chair. It's my first time to witness a lady board member from District 1 to give the very prestigious item in this afternoon's session, Madam Chair. And that is board member Ruby Di Alla. She will be giving her privilege hour or the privilege speech, Madam Chair. May I therefore request that she be recognized?
Okay, thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Honorable Alla Di Alla, please take the right podium, and you may have now the floor. Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Blessings be upon us in this afternoon, and to the most august body, our Presiding Officer, Majority Floor Leader, to my dear colleagues, to the staff, and to all the people in Misamis Occidental. Good afternoon. One of the principles of this present administration is to ensure accountability of public officers and to take effective measures against graft and corruption in the public sector. The President or the present administration of President Rodrigo Rowa Duterte with the Presidential Anti-Corruption Commission, or PACC, shall on behalf of the President ensure accountability of public officers and to take effective measures against graft and corruption in the public sector, achieved through the proper observance of due process in the administration of justice. Moreover, in the recent news dated March 2 of 2021 in Philstar.com, I would like to flash the excerpts of this news. You can see on our screen, I'd like to read, "Duterte Wants Corrupt in DPWH: Clean Up of Department Not Yet Over." President Rodrigo Duterte has warned public corrupt public works and personnel that he has not yet done cleansing their agency as he reminded government workers to avoid wrongdoings if they want to remain in their post. Duterte, who has described the corruption in the Department of Public Works and Highways as grave, vowed to act on citizens' complaints and to summon officials stagg in irregularities. That's the end of the excerpts for these news. After so many pronouncements of our President and his strong dedication to the Filipino nation, I mustered the strength to avail of this privileged speech. My office received a furnished copy of a motion of reconsideration addressed to back-chairperson DPWH First District Engineering Office o Roqueta City, Misamis Occidental, for unfavorable findings of a bidding. I also like to mention that it is not only my office who received the said letter, but most of my colleagues, if not all, in the Sangguniang Panlalawigan of Misamis Occidental. This letter is a motion of reconsideration that pertains to a bidding of a certain government project wherein the project was awarded to the highest bidder instead of the lowest bidder. Well, it was striking for me to see that a notice of disqualification was dated March 6, 2021. This is a Saturday, Madam Chair, and I am not aware that a government office is open on a Saturday. Nakapangutan ako, siguro nang DPWH sa badong mura man sila kadali or kugihan kaayaw nga sa badong dako na ay gatrabaho sa opisina. That was actually my initial reaction when I read the letter or the disqualification notice, especially that the motion of reconsideration requires a contractor only three calendar days to submit. In this letter, it was mentioned by the sender that they receive a notice of disqualification on March 12, 2021, prompting them to submit a motion for reconsideration on March 15, 2021 to the back-chairperson. However, the sender up to this day did not receive any reply from the said office. This representation then was informed that lowest bidders, who are reputable AAA contractors, even if they bid the lowest price, will not be rewarded a contract to favor a particular contractor. Allegedly, this happened not only once, but for several occasions, forming sort of a pattern. Just this year, 2021, Madam Chair, the Singalat Kalamba project, a contract was awarded not to the lowest bidder. Same happened to a contract located in the municipality of Concepcion worth 28,257,526 pesos. Contract still not awarded to the lowest bidder. And again, same happened in this particular bidding. Can we have a chart of a recent bidding that happened in the First District of Misamis Occidental? We have contractor A, B, and C. If you notice in the chart, I cannot see it from here, I'm sorry. There's a 30 million difference. The first bidder with the lowest bidder had a 32% versus 25%, and if I'm not mistaken, is that 15% or 14%? 14%. And the lowest bidder, of course, didn't win or was not awarded in this bidding. Is this some kind of a pattern, a trend, or what? I don't know, I just want to figure this out. This begs the question, was there an anomaly in our bidding process? Personally, it makes me ask a lot of questions. Is there such thing as a favorable bidder? Does DPWH really understand what benefits a competitive bidding gives to our constituents? Are they really fair to all bidders? Also, there were reports that during the conduct of bidding, there were unauthorized spectators or personalities who attended and witnessed the conduct of the said event, despite the fact that those personalities are not entitled to be in the said place. This seemingly repeated incidence in the procurement process before the DPWH, particularly in the First District of Misamis Occidental, caused me fears and worries that government projects were procured by merely following the procedure to make it appear that the procurement process was legally complied with. But in truth and in fact, a possible collusion happened in the process to favor a known contractor. This is a question, Madam Chair. Now, to ease my doubts and my fear of a possible anomaly, I wish that a copy of minutes of back proceedings be available for our office consumption. From this copy of minutes, maybe, just maybe, we can draw some answers to the questions previously raised. Now, with all these doubts and questions, I'm sure you will also have some doubts and questions. Who should I turn to for help? Honestly, the first person I thought of is no other than our honorable Congressman Diego Noni. Why? Because I have heard his radio interview talking about matters related to my speech this afternoon. He sounded angry, agitated, or disturbed. Well, this is, of course, just my interpretation. And it is also in my interpretation that he has some strong opinions in what should and what should not happen in every bidding process in DPWH. And this afternoon, I would also like to present this said audio recording of his radio interview, also for your own interpretation. I'd like to request- Thank you. Well, that is where I draw my interpretation, that he has some strong opinions at what should and what should happen in every bidding process in DPWH. I believe my colleague in the Sangguniang Panlalawigan, together with our good Congressman, well, with all the other agency or government agencies, are also against corruption. I am confident that together with you all, we can work together to avoid anomalies or corruption to spread and influence in our system of governance. Together, let us all please cause an alarm to our fellow government employees. Based on my understanding of RA 9184 and its 2016 IRR Procurement Manual, wala man siguro ta didto gahisgot, nga dapat na ay grupo-grupo ang bidders. For example, sa atong probinsya dinhi sa Misamis Occidental, wala siguro dapat grupo o bidders na taga distrito 1 lang or taga distrito 2 lang. Nganong naaman tai label-label o musulod, pwede, musulod ditto, dili pwede. Unya, kanang ingon raba o gasamok-samok. Dilitaan na kung taga distrito 2, dahil mo bid ka o lower price, ma-label na ka gasamok-samok dinhi sa mo ang distrito 1, as if bawal mo bid o lower or even the lowest price. Together with a majority opinion, I stand to my belief that we should always aim to get the lowest-bidded price to be efficiently beneficial to all, as this government will not be imperiled as to the deliberation of its project, the way of check and balance. Moreover, there are so many guidelines and provisions to assure that the best quality is delivered in every government infrastructure project. Madam Chair, before I end my privileged time given to me this afternoon, with all due respect, I would like to request my fellow members of the body and concerned government agencies to conduct investigation, to ascertain this report, and to recommend appropriate legal measures in order that person and their cohorts of the department liable therewith should take responsibilities of their actions. Lastly, let me remind everyone in this room from a quote from Gerald Ford, "A government big enough to give everything you want is a government big enough to take from you everything that you have." Thank you for bearing with me this afternoon, and may God bless us all. Honorable Alla, thank you for that report and for sharing your insights regarding the issue in the Department of Public Works and Highways. So now, Honorable Alla, would you allow interpretation from members of this august body?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. So, any interpretation from the board members?
Madam Chair.
Yes, the gentleman from Roqueta City, Honorable Winston Catane-
Thank you, very much, Madam Chair. Mayong hapong sa tanan. I also received the same letter from Grace Construction, so I will just limit my interpretation on this letter, Madam Chair. In my observation and in my own opinion, Madam Chair, I could not find any valid reason why Grace Construction be disqualified. Kung akong anaon ang order of events related to this transaction, Madam Chair, musugod lang ko sa March 6, 2021, nga na I notice of post-disqualification addressed to David G. Chong coming from the Department of Public Works and Highways, Misamis Occidental First District Engineering Office. If I may read, Madam Chair.
Okay, please continue.
Upon our post-disqualification validation and verification of the eligibility, technical, and financial documents that have submitted for the bidding of the above-stated contract as the second lowest bid, we found that your bid is non-responsive and therefore your firm is post-disqualified on the following grounds. Decided two grounds, Madam Chair. The first is, during inspection of the equipment stated on the list of equipment pledge for the project, it was observed that one unit of dump truck was not in good condition. Number two ground, on a reply from DPWH, Regional Office Number 9, Sambuanga City, attached a PCMA-generated report indicating a negative 32.6 slippage in one project. Due to these findings, the BAC finds that these are sufficient grounds, thus your firm is disqualified to undertake the project. You should wish to may submit a request for reconsideration of your post-disqualification within three calendar days from the receipt of this notice. In connection with this, Madam Chair, in the 2016 Revised Implementing Rules and Regulations of Republic Act Number 9184, if I may read, Madam Chair, 34.5. However, the BAC determines the bidder, the lowest calculated rated bid fails the criteria for post-qualification, it shall immediately notify the said bidder in writing of its post-disqualification and the grounds for it. Actually, maui gihimo sa DPWH, Madam Chair, nga na sila notice of post-disqualification. In 34.6, if I may continue, Madam Chair, immediately after the BAC has notified the first bidder of its post-disqualification, and notwithstanding any pending request for reconsideration thereof, the BAC shall initiate and complete the same post-disqualification process on the bidder with the second lowest calculated highest rated bid. Question, Madam Chair, did the Grace Construction Corporation request for a reconsideration? The answer is yes, gani napost ni Honorable Alla. Ang letter of Grace Construction, notice of post-disqualification, basi ni siya sa notice of post-disqualification, nga gipadala nila sa DPWH. If I may read, Madam Chair.
Okay, proceed.
This is in reference to your letter dated March 6, 2021, which received today, this March 12, 2021. I am very conscious about the date, Madam Chair, because if you remember, as I mentioned earlier, on the second last paragraph of the letter of notice of post-disqualification, if I may read again, should you wish you may submit a request for reconsideration for our decision for your post-disqualification within three calendar days? Now, remember, nga nagpadala ang DPWH dated March 6, na received sa Grace Construction on March 12, unsa maning three days, calendar days from receipt. So kung 12 siya, obligado mo reply ang Grace Construction 12, 13, 14, 15. Madam Chair, sa gipakita ni Honorable Alla ang reply, na received ang letter sa DPWH on March 15. In other words, sulod siya sa given period, nga gibutang sa taga DPWH. Said letter notified our company that our bid for the above-mentioned project was found not responsive for the following grounds: One unit dump truck was found to be not in good condition upon inspection by your personnel; PCMA report indicating negative 32.6 for one project in Sambuanga Regional Office 9. We would like to submit this motion for reconsideration and to provide our justification for each ground. So money ang justification nga gihimo sa Grace Construction. Upon checking with my shop supervisors, the obligated dump trucks in our bid have no major issues and are in operation order. It could be possible that your inspection team were not able to verify the correct dump truck in your said visit. As such, we would like to invite your inspection team to revisit and inspect said dump truck for your verification of its condition. We have to remember, Madam Chair, that Grace Construction Corporation is a AAA construction. In other words, magispecita og daghan dump truck ano, Madam Chair. Ang number two po ng justification, Madam Chair, in relation sa katung slippage, money ang reply or a justification sa Grace Construction. Attached is the project status report of said Region 9 project with contract ID 200Z00158 that was reported to have a negative 32.6 as of February 25, 2021. This project is under Altus Construction, Grace Construction Corporation. In other words, this is a joint venture project, Madam Chair. And as of February 25, 2021, our project has a positive slippage of 37.83. In their justification, Madam Chair, instead nga negative DI, positive 37.33, as stated by the resident engineer and project engineer of the said project. We believe that the PCMA report is not yet updated as of March 2021. If I may continue, Madam Chair, on the 34.6, on the 2016 Revised Implementing Rules and Regulations of Republic Act Number 9184. If the second bidder passes the post-qualification and provided that the request for reconsideration of the first bidder has been denied, the second bidder shall be post-qualified as the bidder with the LCRB or HRB. Question, Madam Chair, did DPWH send a letter denying the request for reconsideration of the Grace Construction? I talked to one of the staff of Grace Construction about this matter, Madam Chair, and they informed me that they did not receive any letter denying their request for reconsideration. That's all, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you board for that, Honorable Chief.
Madam Chair.
Yes, board member, the FABC President, Honorable Sancho Ominol Jr., is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Based on my evaluation, Madam Chair, the DPWH has the right to award it deserving and has the right to reject if not deserving. See, for example, if you are the lowest bidder, it does not mean nga iaward nila sila kay mukandap mo mas la toro evaluation if your equipment is ready for that project. Then kung delay ka mo pass sa ilahang qualification, proceed sila sa number 2. If the number 2 is not deserving to have that project towards the equipment, proceed na sila sa number 3. And then, kung kin sae maka pasar sa anak na project, di'to na nila iaward. My point is, mas mayos siguro nga na at taga DPWH para maka ansir sila maadres nila ng problema, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, board member Sancho Ominol Jr. Madam Chair. Yes, the gentle lady from Panaon, Honorable Liam. Do you have the word?
Thank you, Madam Chair.
First of all, good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
And first of all, board, mapasalamat dako sa ato ang kauban, board member Alla, nga iyaag yininggi takol nga issue. Salamat kayan na. And actually, kanini ang issue na ano po kuyadunggan ani last week lang. So, I've been in public service for the past almost 15 years. Unya, karun pagi kunakadungog o ginaaning nga, mura bag mga in-your-face na kaayaw mga irregularities. So I'm very glad nga natatagan yining pagtagad na to the re. And a lot of times, kung ang usakka agency na i-problema, we really have to go back sa ilang leader. For the first time, sa ako nangisupi kanina, nga karun pa ni nga muradaghan kay problema. So we need to go back, kung saan din naitabuan eh. I know recently na I change of leadership sa First Engineering District. Ang ako apaganing na, just recently, ako nadunggan nga, naalagi ko ni question nga nganong kanay na butang, nga naapa ko na mas qualified pa na nga district engineer. So maunay angay po na to nga, hopefully matanaw, kung unsag UDI ang basis sa appointment sa mga district engineers. I am wondering if they have the same policy as the DEP Ed bitaw? Ang DEP Ed, grabi kainat sila ka meticulous bahin anang localization. They want their teachers to be localized. Kay kung tagadinha magunang teacher or tagadinha dapat ang district engineer or DPWH official. Na ay feeling ba nga mas, nakasalay sense of accountability. Kay they have to, to be answerable to their own community. Kay imagine na kung ang district engineer is from here, mauob ya po na siya nga mga binuang. So that's something hopefully we can, um, we can ah, write or make a resolution to DPWH nga matanaw nila nga ma- mapalocalized pagod ang pagappoint nila sa ilamad DPWH officials, labina na mga district engineers. Kay ah, gani, with regards to this, na kadungog pag gani ko nga dinharas sa sulod sa DPWH, nga pwidi, na ako na mga eh, mga hintidin ha og shorty bond. May nanaba? This is the first time before, saan ang isulte, naagi ko ka mayon, naagi ko ka Vice Mayor, pwadyo ko kadungog nga naara ditto, nga harap harapan na kaayon. Unya, to think nga do thirty naman kunuhay ta. Unya grabe naman kaayon mo, mugukod sa mga corrupt, corrupt officials. Ni ang ano mani, nga kapadayon mani siya. Dayo na apoy pamahagi kuno, pagka karun nga, ang mga contractors i-encourage nga mo bill in advance. Bisag ang ilahang accomplishment is fifty percent pa, ipa bill na seventy-five percent. And that's supposed to have been encouraged by the inside, sa insider na sa DPWH. Instead of them protecting the quartal of the government, sila nanuwi gay encourage. So ah, ah, kung ano gini, I, I, I don't know nga, ah, kani mga daghang ng gawas nga mga irregularities, coincidence rabi ni nga naapoy bagong leadership din ha sa maong ah, ah, district office. Ah, that's something that we really have to look into. So ah, hopefully atu agi na mataga ag pagtagad, maybe ah, demand sa mga experts ani sa mga technicalities sa DPWH, so siguro na alay atum maas na maka-investigate ani. Thank you very much.
Okay, ah, thank you, Board Datalin, for expressing your support to Honorable Ala. Yes, um, the gentleman from Tadella, Honorable Ternihinchi Estanyo is recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good afternoon, ah, my colleague, ah, guest from this August hall. Ah, first of all, Madam Chair, again, I would like to commend the distinguished sponsor for valiantly and courageously bringing this issue to this August body. As this really concerns the general welfare and all public interest. Ah, to the distinguished sponsor, Madam Chair, based from your information, the, did Grace Construction receive a copy of the denial of their MR or the motion for reconsideration?
Um, in the post. Board Member Ala.
Answer, please answer.
It was made mention by Honorable Katani that there was a motion for reconsideration submitted by Grace Construction. Am I correct?
Yes.
So based on that ah, motion for reconsideration, from your information, did Grace Construction receive a copy of the denial of their MR?
As to my knowledge, Madam Chair, up to this day, the sender of the Grace Construction did not receive any reply from the said office.
So.
Okay, thank you, Board Ala.
Despite of ah, no copy of the denial of the motion for reconsideration, from your information, did the bidding still proceed or post through?
Madam Chair, um, up to my knowledge also, the bidding did proceed. And I may add, Madam Chair, that um, basi sa ilahang nakuha nga impormasyon, delete na kuno sila replyan because nilapas na kuno sa three calendar days nga, so delete na obligado nga mo reply ang GE or DPWH sa sender of the motion of reconsideration. Well, in fact, sa ato ang gitan awdri, maoto, Madam Chair nga, it, it is striking or surprise me nga murag seemingly idali-dali ang post qua on a Saturday. And yet, kung ni replied sila og na receive nila og twelve, twelve, March 12, 13, 14, 15, aduna na Sabado og Domingo, sumunang napadala nila sa DPWH, March 15. And yet, it's still within the three calendar days nga pwede pa sila maupilara sa ilahang motion for reconsideration.
Okay, thank you board for that answer.
May copy niya, Madam Chair?
Please proceed.
Ah, from my understanding and ah, of the existing rules and regulations, Madam Chair, despite ah, as what the, the sponsor made mention, despite the granting, there is the lapse of the period to avail of the motion for reconsideration as ah, the information lodged before us here. Ah, I think it is ah, mandatory or obligato- the, the, the department is still obliged to make a written ah, reply as to the ah, notice of denial if indeed. So with that, Madam Chair, I would like to continue and reiterate the ah, provisions ah, previously read by Honorable Katani, particularly in the last paragraph. If the second, second bidder passes the post qualification and provided that the request for reconsideration of the bidder has been denied, the second bidder shall be post-qualified as the bidder with the LCRB or HRRB. So meaning, if there is no denial, they cannot proceed. That is my understanding, Madam Chair. Now, to the sponsor, Madam Chair, will you now agree with me ma- yeah, based on your speech that there is indeed a favored construct- ah, contractor during the conduct of such bidding, considering there is a blatant or any manifest violation? Will you agree with me with that?
Okay, Honorable Ala.
Madam Chair, seemingly it may appear that there is really an anomaly in the bidding process. That wa- that is why, Madam Chair, I am pe- I am appealing to this August body to please investigate on this matter.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Estanyo.
So, in your privileged speech a while ago, you made mention of several, no? This is not the, the one that we tackle today, it's just a piece of a pie. As you ah, elaborate, there are, I think, three instances ah, that you might mention as to the process or procedure in which, which led to the awarding of the project, not to the lowest bidder, not even to the second lowest bidder, but glaringly, it was awarded to the highest bidder. So is this a prevalent situation in the Department of Public Works and highways, particularly in District 1, ah, Madam Sponsor? In your opinion, from your information?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Board Member Ala.
Alleged, allegedly, this happened not only once, but for several occasions, as I have mentioned in my speech, Madam Chair. That's why personally, it looks to me that it is like having a pattern already, that lowest bidders are not in favor, ah, to favor a particular contractor.
Okay, thank you, board.
May proceed, Madam Chair.
Yes, please proceed.
Now, Madam Sponsor, will you agree with me that if we will not act this matter, this practice will continue in the succeeding biddings?
Madam Chair.
Yes, please continue, board.
As I also have mentioned in my previous speech, I am confident that together with all of you and with other government agencies, that if we can work together, we can avoid anomaly or corruption to spread in the influence or to influence in our system of governments. And together, Madam Chair, I'm appealing that we should all please cause an alarm to our fellow government employees.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Ala.
Finally, Madam Chair, the sponsor.
Yes, Board Member Estanyo, please continue.
Madam Sponsor, eh, thank you very much of your observation. Now, if that is what you are driving of, now, will you also agree with me that in order to stop this practice, a thorough investigation against the hearing officials shall be conducted by the higher authorities, particularly the DPWH secretary, the presidential anti-crime commission, and the office of the president? Are you amenable to that if we bring this matter to the concerned authorities, Madam Sponsor?
Madam Chair, I am more than one hundred percent amenable to this to conduct investigation, to ascertain this report, and to recommend appropriate legal measures in order so that this person or and their cohorts on the department liable they should take responsibilities of their actions.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. That's all, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Estanyo, for expressing your comments. Ah, any other remarks from the August body?
Ah, Board Chairman.
Yes, ah, the gentleman from Tunggub City, Honorable Tito Disina.
Ah, thank you.
You are recognized.
Ah, Board Chairman. So ang ako lang siguro nga punto delete lang pangotan na address to Board Member Ala bat. Ah, gusto lang ako nga para at least more or less, ah, masamtan po sa mga tele viewers, labin agad sa ah, oksaridyo, kamaminaw sa tumakatauhan nga din, ang gihi mo sa sanggunan panalawigan. Ah, para lang pag ah, verify o pag implement sa insaktong proseso o sa balao dun nga ah, giimplementar sa gobyerno, both ah, local and national government. Ah, una, di mention ni Board Member Katani nga, ang tanang procurement ang nagbase tagbalao dun, ang 9184, din ang isa sa mga provisions, diyan, nakainon nga, ang pagimplementar niya na nga beneficial gap sa gobyerno. Tanang mga gipangpalit, ah, base sa ah, 9184 nga, ang Louis ah, price may atong iaward. Ang katayuan maong ah, ah, ang benepisyon nga to balik sa gobyerno. So same ragiapon sa DPWH, nga din ang ah, basihan sa pag ah, award o sa ang muda og sa maong bidding, din ang Louis bidder ragiapon. Pero kung atong nakita, ah, tong nabasa, ah, bi sa presentation ni Board Member Ala kaganina, nga ang iaward ang ming daog ang highest ah, bidder. So, una nga, mabutang sa tungu na una, labin agad sa katauhan nga ah, wala na po nasunod ang balao dun. Although, sunay mga justification nga gihi mo ah, sa maong departamento, pero ang justification manggot pagi balik ah, ang justification pagi balik, sayo na po gerato hi mo, daghan mantag mga basis nga may justify na to, nga kana may atong padagon. But ah, kung tanawon na to ang naitabu sa ah, sa presentation kaganina, nga wala sa ragiaponing kumblay ah, base sa ah, mga sa proseso na kinhanglan i-implement. So, in my own ah, personal observation, Madam Chairman, ah, kinanglan git siguro nga, ang departamento ang concerned o other departments pagit pagi balik ah, sa national government nga makakandak is la g investigation. Ah, may tumut sa maong issue ng ming gawas ah, sa DPWH sa District 1. Kay ah, ang rule sa sanggunan panalawigan kita nga pinili sa katauhan, ah, kita po pagi balik ang ah, concerned puta niya na, paglantaw niya na, ah, labin agad sa mga implementation sa mga projects and programs ah, sa local o sa national government, Madam Chairman. That's all, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Disina, for sharing your idea. Um, yes, um, the distinguished ah, board member from Clarine, ah, Honorable Elsa Navarro.
Good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Vice. As far as I know, a project need not necessarily be awarded to the lowest bidder. However, all bids submitted must be post-qualified. So ang BAC should review and evaluate every bid, go through every document submitted to determine if responsive ba on all the requirements. Even if the bid submitted is the lowest, if the bid lacks certain requirement or condition at specified in the bidding documents, then it cannot be awarded to the lowest bidder. The exact ah, phrase, if I'm not mistaken, should be the lowest responsive bidder. So pero kani in this particular project with ID number twenty-one KJ zero 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 nine, based on my observation, considering na ang contractor, the license was the Grace Construction, is a reputable AAA contractor, one unit of dam truck, nga ilang decide ditto as one of the reason for post disqualification, is not sufficient enough and very minor lang para mauoibasiha nila. And also katung number two nila nga decide nga thirty-two percent, ah, negative thirty-two percent slippage, which um, was believed to be not yet updated. Kay gani sa historiya sa taga Grace Construction, um, as of February twenty-five, twenty twenty-one, um, they have a record of positive thirty-seven point eighty-three percent slippage and not negative. So based on the documents presented, ah, it seems to me that there is some kind of bias or murag na ay gipaburan ang katung ah, ah, bidding process. That's all, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Elsa. Yes, ah, the gentleman from Usami City, the Honorable, um, Eduardo Cibedo.
Thank you, ah, Madam Presiding Officer, and ah, thank you, ah, my colleague, ah, from Rocketa, Board Member Ala, for the ah, privileged speech. It has ah, opened my mind on these matters because I am mostly, although my scope is as an ex officio member is ah, the whole province, but ah, this is the first time that I heard about this. But I, I would like to commend your actions for bringing this matter to the body. And that, ah, as I have observed, Madam Chair, that ah, um, the role, the role of a, of a member of Congress is a ah, an oversight committee, ah, an oversight role in matters of funds of the national government. And whether he would ah, he would be ah, conducting an investigation in the House of Representatives in a committee level, just like what happened on the Committee of Public Governance on our good Congressman, Deputy Speaker, Henry Yuss Mominal, and the participation of the good Congressman, ah, Nonite, in the questioning, the ah, conduct of how it was implemented. That is a rightful um, ah, function of a good, of a congressman. And likewise, uh, in his district for the implementation of such projects, ah, it would also be ah, pwede po kinisya nga ah, ah, ang iya hangga hom pagka Congressman, iya hanggamitun nga para ma-lantaw nga sakto ang pagimplementar sa iya hang distrito. However, money, basi sa interview nga gipakita kanina sa video, din gusto sa ato ang halangdon nga Congressman, jagote, nga delete maupil ang conge- ang sa District 1, ah, distrito nga mga contractors. Or kin saba, in, in, in other words, sa lain pagkasultipah, aduna yusin one, na ipinili nga moon ni siya mo daog, delete padagon ang mga distrito or lain mga contractors. That, such, muna ang mga action nga nag-insinuate, naghatag, kahulugan, nga aduna influensya, no? Aduna influensya ang ihatag sa atong mayong Congressman, the good Congressman, ditto sa bids and awards committee. Din ang integridad karun sa BAC maui ma-kwestion. Kay aduna may ginasunod sila sa procurement law. Kay, aduna may ginasunod sila sa procurement law. O makita po na kung aduna kanay influence ya, o ang integridad karoon sa tong back ma-kwestion na, kay tungod lagi sa mga most, ah, kanang pag-disqualify, disqualify. Madam Chair, ang akoa karoon, observation lang. Grace Construction AAA, no questions about that. Grace Construction has been in the business of construction for more than 30, 40 years, sa kung nahibawan. And to be able to not to come up with just two flimsy reason nga i-disqualify, I think there is now the reason nga, there is a chosen one, no? Claro lang, aduna'y, ah, ah, basis na ibasihanan para mag-disqualify lang yod, pangitaan. Pangitaan lang yod, yod disqualification sa Grace Construction. Simple ra kayo, no? Duhalang very small item na dili yod pwede na masayop ang Grace Construction kay tungod AAA lagi o more than 40 years of experience. So, Madam Chair, no? This would mean, na para sa akoa, this would mean that there is an influence in the bids and awards committee, that the integrity of the bids and awards committee has now in question. Well, even though, maskig aduna kanang na ang procurement law, mangita lang yod sila o reason to disqualify one that is, ah, ah, qualified, ah, rather, ah, ah, kanang qualified with, uh, AAA and have the most, maybe the most in terms of experience. So, Madam Chair, uh, I adhere to the statement of my colleague, uh, board member Sanyo, that, uh, further actions should be, uh, taken on this, um, August body so as that there would be a proper, uh, investigation on these, uh, matters. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Sibedo, for sharing your reaction in the ma, on the matter. Uh, any other comments? Yes, Board Member Ala?
Madam Chair, I know that the case of Grace Construction triggered a lot of questions. But, Madam Chair, just to be clear, this appeal is not only special for Grace Construction or the bidding that involves Grace Construction, but my appeal, Madam Chair, is to look into the bidding processes that happen in First District of Nisamis Occidental.
Okay, thank you, Board Member Ala. So, any other comments? Okay, uh, thank you sa tananong board members, no? Who give their opinions and insight regarding this issue. So, if there are no other remarks, uh, the chair would like to conclude this part by asking, uh, what is the pleasure of the body regarding this matter?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Honorable Sanyo, again, you are recognized.
In view of this, Madam Chair, I would like to move on joint sponsorship, uh, that a separate resolution be passed, Madam Chair, addressed to the depart, uh, Department of Public Works and Highways, uh, through Secretary Mark Bier to conduct a thorough investigation, relate, uh, to post the investigation of district engineer Maria B. David, the bids and awards committee chairperson, members, and
Honorable Chief.
Technical working group, all of DPWA's First Engineering District, for alleged rega, regularities or possible violation of laws, rules, and regulations in the conduct of public bidding for infrastructure projects in District One, Province of Nisamis Occidental, which, uh, the two resolutions to be included later during the other matters, Madam Chair.
Okay, uh, duly noted, uh, Board Member Sanyo, your request to pass,
I subscribe, Madam Chair.
The following two resolutions be included later during the other matters. Okay, duly noted. Okay, uh, thank you, Board Member Alai Ala. Daghan kingsalamat sa iyong pag-expressan 'yong matter.
I now ask the permission, Madam Chair, to, may I go back to my original?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
So, again, thank you, everyone. Uh, moving forward, majority floor leader is the next item on our agenda.
Madam Chair, um, we will, um, I, I do believe that there are, there are other motions that need crap up in connection with the privilege speech of, uh, board member Alai. However, for the meantime, uh, we will proceed by, uh, taking up, uh, the, uh, agenda of the day, Madam Chair. We will approve, Madam Chair, so that, uh, the matters that we are going to discuss will be treated, Your Honor.
Okay.
May I, uh, move for the approval of the agenda of, uh, today, Madam Chair, with, uh, six inclusions on joint sponsorship, Madam Chair? May therefore move that, uh, the agenda of the day, together with the six inclusions, be approved on joint sponsorship.
There is a motion from the majority floor leader that today's agenda be approved with six inclusions and to be tackled during the other matters. Any comments, reaction? The chair has none, so the motion is heard by. Next, please.
Uh, Madam Chair, may we now proceed to the approval of the minutes of, uh, the April 5, 2021, uh, regular session, Madam Chair? On joint sponsorship?
On joint sponsorship?
Yes, Madam Chair.
The majority floor leader motion for the approval of the minutes of the April 5, 2021, regular session. Uh, any remarks, suggestion? There being none, so the motion is carried. Next, please.
We will now, uh, proceed to the next item, Madam Chair, the petitions and request. Can we start with the item number one? Uh, can we, can I request, Madam Chair, the secretary to please read the letter dated, uh, April 6, 2021, Madam Chair?
Madam Secretary, please read. Number one, under petitions or requests, "A letter dated April 6, 2021, from the Honorable Governor Philip Titan to Dr. Edimar Esalota, Provincial Administrator, addressed to the Honorable Vice Governor Arura Virginia Omonte, requesting for the passage of a resolution authorizing the provincial governor Philip Titan on behalf of the provincial government of Nisamis Occidental to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Department of Science and Technology represented by its regional director, Alfonso P. Alamban, to facilitate the transfer of funds to the provincial government for the implementation of the program on community empowerment through science and technol, technology for appropriate action."
Majority floor leader.
May therefore move on joint sponsorship, Madam Chair, that, uh, the same be approved for first reading with reservation.
On joint sponsorship?
On joint, ah, yes, uh, Madam Chair, on joint sponsorship.
On joint sponsorship, that is said item as stated, be approved on first reading, eh, with reservation. Please continue.
You will now, uh, can I now move, uh, Madam Chair, that, uh, the same will be approved on second and final reading on joint sponsorship?
Madam Chair, before approval?
Yes, Board Member, uh, Wominal, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. May we know the exact figure kumpila i-transfer to the provincial government for the implementation of the program on community empowerment through science and technology?
Can I request our, uh, secretary yet to please open the, uh, let the, our, uh, screen, uh, considering that, uh, it states there the exact amount? Uh, can I get a firsthand information from the chairman of, uh, the Committee on, uh, Financial Appropriation?
Yes, um, Board Member Disina, you have the floor.
Tanawon na'to ang screen, uh, naman sa PowerPoint na presentation. Uh, nakabutlang sa kontrata, uh, only 452,040 pesos, ang amount involved, uh, sa maong mua.
Is that correct, uh, board member, the beautiful, uh, board member from tanawon? Being the secretary of, uh, Health, ah, being the chairman of the Health?
Board Member Lynn, you're recognized.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, yeah, that's the, the amount involved.
I, I'm talking of the figure, uh, Honorable Chair.
Okay, yes, Honorable Chair, that seems to be the right figure, thank you.
So I was not wrong after all in, uh, referring the same. I'll get the exact, uh, figure. Uh, we will now proceed, um,
Okay, thank you, uh, majority floor leader, please reiterate your motion for second and final reading.
May therefore move, uh, I heard also a board member, uh, Wominal of, uh, the FABC, moving for the, did I hear you correctly? Uh, board, uh, Wominal, for final?
Uh, yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair. Salamat sa exact figure nga gipagwas.
Board, please reiterate your motion.
May I therefore move on joint sponsorship, that the same, the request of the Honorable Governor be approved on the first
Second and final reading.
And final reading.
It has been moved by the majority floor leader that this item, uh, be approved on second and final reading, reading the pertinent rules of this sanggunian. Any other comments, reaction? The chair has none, so the motion is heard by approved. Next, please.
Um, Madam Chair?
Yes?
Permission is hereby, uh, requested for items number two and three be, uh, a subject of an omnibus motion, Madam Chair?
Okay, the request for an omnibus motion is heard by acknowledge.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for items number two to three. By way of an omnibus motion, may I therefore move on joint sponsorship that these items be approved on first reading, Madam Chair? And refer the same to the Committee on Budget and Appropriation.
There is an omnibus motion from the majority floor leader that item numbers two and three be approved on first reading and be referred to the Committee on Budget. Is that on joint sponsorship?
Yes, Madam Chair, on joint sponsorship.
Next, please.
Again, uh, another request, Madam Chair, for items number one and two of, uh, the Measures and Communications, may I be allowed to, uh, make an omnibus motion, Madam Chair? Items, uh, one to two, one and two.
Okay, your request is granted.
By way of an omnibus motion, Madam Chair, uh, may therefore move that items one and two be approved on joint sponsorship, Madam Chair? And the same be noted in our request, Madam Chair.
Okay, noted.
We will now proceed, Madam Chair, to the committee reports. Can I request that, uh, again, uh,
Uh, Madam Chairman?
Yes, uh, Board Member Disina?
So, uh, under the committee reports, Madam Chairman, I, under, uh, item number one and number two, Madam Chairman?
One and two.
So, in behalf of the committee chairman, committee, uh, on ways and means, headed by, uh, board member Agnes Villanueva, Madam Chairman, so I'd like to render the report, uh, on item number one, uh, committee report number zero four dash twenty-one, Madam Chairman? Uh, there are, uh, four items here, uh, seven, uh, there are seven items, Madam Chairman. So I therefore move for the, uh, adoption of the said committee report and, uh, for joint, uh, sponsorship, Madam Chairman, with reservations on item, reservation on item number, uh, six and seven, Madam Chairman? For joint sponsorship, Madam Chairman?
Okay, um, there is a motion from Honorable Tito Disina, that committee report, um, number zero four dash twenty-one, um, dated April 7, 2021, Committee on Ways and Means be adopted with reservation.
Uh, remarks, Madam Chairman, that item number, uh, six and seven,
Subject matter.
Uh, number six and seven, under the committee report number zero four dash twenty-one, uh, be included in the discussion during other matters, Madam Chairman?
Okay, noted. So, is that on joint sponsorship?
Yes, Madam Chairman.
On joint sponsorship. Please continue.
Madam Chair?
So, item number two, uh,
Sorry.
Committee report number, uh, G dash zero one dash twenty-one, Madam Chairman, dated, uh, April 7, 2021. I therefore move for the adoption of the said committee report, Madam Chairman? For joint sponsorship, Madam Chairman?
Again, Board Member Tito Disina, move that committee report number J dash zero one dash twenty-one be adapted on joint sponsorship? On joint sponsorship? Please continue.
The, the brave board member, just like the board member Ala, who dared to have an expose, uh, requesting that, uh, board member Winston Katani be recognized.
Again, uh, Honorable Winston Katani?
Yes, uh,
You are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and the bravest among the brave. Thank you, Honorable Len. Uh, item number three, committee report number zero two dash twenty-one, dated April 7, 2021, of the Committee on Public Utilities, Energy, and Legislative Franchise. In behalf of the committee, Madam Chair, I move for its adoption on GS, Madam Chair.
Okay, Honorable Katani, being the chairman of the Public Utilities, move that committee report number zero two dash twenty-one be adapted on joint sponsorship? Next, please.
Item number four, Madam Chair. Committee report number zero two dash twenty-one, eight, dated April 7, 2021, of the Committee on Fisheries and Aquatic Resources. In behalf of the committee, I move for its adoption on GS, Madam Chair.
On joint sponsorship? The joint committee report number zero two dash twenty-one of the Committee on Fisheries and Aquatic Resources, reserve by adopted. Next, please.
We will now proceed, uh, Madam Chair, to the requesting that, uh, for second reading, uh, board, uh, Winston?
Again, uh, the gentleman of Rakyata City, Honorable Winston Katani, secondly.
Um, proposed resolution number twelve dash twenty-one, uh, uh, this has been approved and adopted last session. So in behalf of the committee, Madam Chair, I move to pass this on second and final reading.
There is a motion from Honorable Katani, that proposed resolution number twelve dash twenty-one be approved on second and final reading. On joint sponsorship? be approved on second and final reading, on joint sponsorship. Any comments, reaction? There being none, so the motion is hereby hereby approved. Next please.
Uh ordinance number zero two zero seven dash three two zero two zero, again, madam chair, in behalf of the committee, I move to pass this on second and final reading.
Board member Katani, move that audience number zero two zero seven dash twenty twenty of the Sangguneang Bayan Obihebines um be approved on second and final reading. Is that on joint sponsorship? Board member Katani?
Yes, madam chair.
Yes, on joint sponsorship. Any comments, reaction? Hearing none, so the motion is hereby carried.
We will now uh proceed to uh the P C L matters, uh P B M L P, I'm sorry, P B M L P matters uh.
Uh none, Your Honor.
Thank you. The beautiful young lady. Gaporong pagugubabay magugub is K uh P C L.
Thank you. Uh madam chair, may I be recognized?
Um yes, uh the gentleman from Usami City, again, honorable Eduardo Cibido.
Uh thank you, madam chair, and thank you, Mr. Majority Floor Leader, for the P C L, madam chair, um tentatively, on uh May sixth, there will be a uh P C L provincial conference uh wherein will be uh important issues will be discussed on matters uh in the province and uh also of the guidelines from the D I L G. And it will be held in uh uh Todela, Jim. So, uh kuwan pa na, uh madam chair, kanang uh tentative la?
Tentative.
But uh there will be a activity by the P C L um within in the month of May. Thank you very much, madam chair.
Truly noted, board, and thank you for that information. Majority floor leader?
Is K. If we receive?
Yes, madam chair, permission to speak?
Yes, uh again, the honorable Sancho Minal Junior, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, majority floor leader. Thank you, madam chair. Um I would like to make a manifestation by informing this honorable August body relative to the current update on the drug clerk barangays since first quarter of the year is gone already. So what do we have here, madam chair? Is the data as of March twenty twenty-one validated by the P D ya Misamis Occidental office. So, we start from Aluran, madam chair, number barangay thirty-eight affected only one. Sa drug clerk, this uh madam chair, Baliangao barangay fifteen, two barangays affected. Kalamba, Abonifacio twenty-eight. Yes, complete drug free, all barangays in Abonifacio. Kalamba nineteen, affected four. Clarin? Twenty-nine barangays, one affected. Concepcion? Yes, drug-free, all barangays, perfect. Jimenez? Likewise, perfect, drug-free, all barangays. Lopez Saina? Yes, likewise, perfect. Twenty-eight barangays, none affected. Panahon? Yes, perfect, Giapon, madam chair. Claridel? Likewise, perfect, drug-free. As of March twenty twenty-one, is uh madam chair, Den Sapang Delaga, twenty-eight out of thirty-two, four affected. Sinakaban? Out of twenty-five, eight angilang affected. Todela, thirty-three barangays affected nine. Donve? Perfect, drug-free, all barangays. Orokita City, out of forty-nine, two affected. Usami City, out of fifty-one, forty-five affected. So there are six barangays na drug-free nagyut at class ng Usamis, madam chair. Tanggup City, yes, perfect, fifty-five. So sumatotal affected barangays out of four hundred ninety barangays throughout Misok, seventy-six only ang affected. So in summary, only fifteen percent of four hundred ninety barangays remain affected, madam chair. In Usami City, with the highest number of affected barangays, forty-six of them all still having ongoing C B R pain. So as part of the uh requirements to be pronounced as drug clerk. So rest assured that with this uh humble presentation, madam chair, we will try our very best to make all barangays in this province drug clerked by strengthening the implementation of the barangay anti-drug abuse council. That's all, madam chair, thank you.
Thank you, board member Wominan.
Madam chair.
That chair appreciates your comprehensive report, board.
Madam chair, point of clarification?
Yes, board member uh Winston Katani.
About sa Oroketa, because Oroketa has only
Two.
You know, forty-seven barangays, and you've mentioned forty-nine barangays.
Forty-nine, so two barangays affected.
Yes, but there are only forty-seven barangays in Oroketa.
Uh uh
Idunagan siguro.
Okay, okay. Just a point of clarification.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, board member Katani.
Thank you, madam chair.
Also thank you, board.
Thank you, board.
Okay.
Uh madam chair, is K uh representative?
Clarification ng for Sapang Delaga. There are only twenty-eight barangays sa Sapang Delaga.
Hala. Di gugan ng landiapon?
Atong tawago ng P D ya ni Egmapon, gusay klaro ni, di ka magunis P D ya, madam chair, sa atong Misok chapter.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you, board.
Majority floor leader?
Madam chair, for I P matters uh considering that uh the representative of the I Ps in the person of board member uh Binya will proceed to the other matters, madam chair?
Yes, please proceed.
Consisting of uh six, sex, our sex, six uh
Idol?
Other matters.
For other matters. Can we, can we request uh the uh letter of uh dated the April eighth, twenty twenty-one of uh that the same of the uh D I L G concerned citizen? Secretary, can we request you to please read the same?
Again, uh madam secretary, please read. Happy Furnish, uh the provincial governor, Governor Philip Titan, Vice Governor Arura Virginia Imahmonte and the Sangguneang Panalavigan of Misamis Occidental reporting that there are streets at barangay southern Poblacion, Paridel, Misamis Occidental, which are closed to passage with no explanation or advisory as to the reason for closure. And asking uh and pinpointing that they are clear violations of the L G memorandum circular number two thousand nineteen dash one six seven and two thousand nineteen dash twelve, provincial ordinance number thirteen dash twenty-one, and presidential directives to clear roads, streets, sidewalks, alleys from illegal infrastru- infrastructures and obstructions which are blocking the pathways for pedestrians and affecting the flow of traffic. The same letter um further requests the office of director, the provincial director and other government agencies to conduct investigation and to sanction those authorities for the said violations. Uh the said authorities in the in the municipality of Paridel.
Majority floor leader?
May therefore move, uh madam chair, that uh the same be uh approved on first reading by joint sponsorship, by uh joint sponsorship, madam chair? And refer the same to the committee on laws and ordinance, considering that this is a gross violation of the first provision of uh the local government code. Mogony number one, number one is here. Closures of uh streets is not allowed without the concurrence or the approval of the Sanggunean. May therefore move, uh madam chair, that the same be referred to the committee on laws? And be published matters, uh madam chair.
Okay, uh it has been moved by the majority floor leader that item number one under the uh summary of other matters, as stated, be approved on first reading and be referred to the committee on laws and uh police piece and order. Is that on joint sponsorship?
On joint sponsorship, madam chair.
Next please. Item number two?
Two point one, uh madam chair. Requesting the uh secretary again to please read the same.
Two point one up to?
Only one, uh madam.
Two point six?
Two point one.
Okay, madam secretary. Uh the two point one is part of the letter of the provincial governor dated April twelve, twenty twenty-one through uh Doctor Edimar Isalota, provincial administrator, address to our honorable vice governor, requesting for the passage of uh resolution authorizing the provincial governor Philip Titan on behalf of the provincial government of Misamis Occidental to transfer the current funds from the pharmacist five, item number eighty-three, to supervisor administrative officer, item number eighty-one in Doña Maria Ditan Memorial Hospital.
May I therefore move on joint sponsorship, madam chair, that the same be approved on first reading and refer the same to the committee of uh budget. On joint sponsorship.
On joint sponsorship, that this item be approved on first reading and be referred to the committee on budget. Next please. Two point?
Two point two? Up to two point six?
Two point two?
Uh requesting that uh I be allowed to make an omnibus motion in this matter, madam chair?
The majority floor leader is permitted.
May I therefore move, uh madam chair, that two point two to two point six uh the same be approved on first reading with reservation, madam chair?
It has been moved by the majority floor leader that I subitem, two point two, two point three, up to two point six be approved on first reading with reservation. On joint sponsorship?
Yes, madam chair, on joint sponsorship.
Please proceed.
Madam chair, considering that this matter involves uh health matters and uh I do not like that uh I will be scolded by the chairman of the committee on health. May I therefore move, madam chair, that uh the same, the same be approved on uh second and final reading.
There is a motion from the majority floor leader that item subitem, two point two?
Up to two point six?
Up to two point six be approved on second and final reading, with the pertinent rules of this Sanggunean. Any comments, reaction? Hearing none, so the motion is hereby approved.
Uh can I request uh the secretary to uh read item number three?
Number three?
Madam secretary? Yeah, the uh the letter dated uh, the communication dated March twenty-nine, twenty twenty-one.
Yes, this is a letter dated March twenty-nine, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one from the honorable governor addressed to the honorable members of this Sanggunean through the honorable vice governor, requesting for the passage of a resolution adopting the local road network development plan well or L R N D P for twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-five for appropriate action.
Majority floor leader?
May I therefore move on joint sponsorship, madam chair, that the same be approved on first reading with reservation, madam chair?
On joint sponsorship, that this item be approved on first reading with reservation. Please proceed.
May I therefore move, uh madam chair, that uh considering that this matter involves uh road, a road uh uh road uh development plan?
Network, network.
Or road plan? Apil rebaning road plan, ano itong geryport? May I therefore move, madam chair, that the same be approved on first reading, a second reading?
Final reading.
Second and final reading.
Upon motion of the majority floor leader, that item number three, under the petitions of other matters, be approved on second and final reading, with the pertinent rules of this Sanggunean. Any comments, reaction? The chair has none, so the motion is carried. Item number four?
Number four, can I request again uh uh our secretary to please read the same?
Madam secretary?
Number four, a letter dated April twelve, twenty twenty-one from honorable Governor Philip Titan through the honor- through the provincial administrator, requesting for a, for the passage of a resolution authorizing the provincial governor, honorable Philip Titan and uh and or Doctor Edimar Isalota, each provincial administrator in behalf of the provincial government of Misamis Occidental to enter and sign a memorandum of agreement with the local government unit of Sapang Delaga represented by its mayor, Donji D. Animas for the implementation of subj- sub-project under P R D P for appropriate action.
Madam chair?
Yes, majority floor leader?
Considering that this is in connection with the uh uh memorandum of agreement uh to be entered into by the uh chief executive of uh Sapang Delaga and the implementation of the sub-project under uh P R D P. May I therefore move uh that the same be approved on joint sponsorship on first and final, a first reading? With reservation, madam chair?
There is a motion for the approval of item number four on first reading with reservation, on joint sponsorship. Needing a second? So the motion is approved. Please continue.
May I therefore move, uh madam chair, that the same be approved on second and final reading.
Um there is a motion from the majority floor leader that this item be approved on second and final reading, with the pertinent rules of this Sanggunean. Any comments, reaction? Hearing none, so the motion is
For five and six, uh madam chair, may I request that board member Hinge uh
Yes, uh the gentleman of Todela, honorable attorney Hinge Estanyo is recognized.
Thank you very much, madam chair, for item number five, a resolution respectfully requesting the honorable Mark Abiliar Secretary, D P W H to cause the investigation of district engineer Maria, Maria B. David, the bids and awards committee person and its members and technical working group, all of the part, the D P W H first engineering district for alleged irregularities or possible violations of laws, rules, and regulations in the conduct of public meetings for infrastructure projects in District One, province of Misamis Occidental. And for item number six, madam chair, a resolution respectfully requesting the honorable Commissioner Greco Bilika, chairperson, presidential anti-corruption and commission to cause the investigation with the same manifestation as earlier manifested on uh item number five, madam chair. May I proceed, madam chair?
First reading?
Uh I move for its approval on first reading with reservation, madam chair.
Two resolutions or item number five only?
Item number Item number five and number six, Madam Chair.
Okay. Uh, there is a motion from Honorable Estanyo that the said two resolutions pertaining to the issue on DPWH, as stated, be approved on first reading with reservation on joint sponsorship. Please proceed.
Uh, Madam Chair, considering the, as earlier manifested through the privileged speech of the, uh, distinguished gentleman, uh, women, woman from Oroqueta City, Madam Chair, uh, I would like to incor- the contents of the privileged speech, Madam Chair, be incorporated with also in this resolution, in the where as has close, Madam Chair, and considering the, that there were upcoming meetings, uh, that may be conducted, Madam Chair, and due to the fact that we are still in the first quarter of the fiscal year, in order to prevent the occurrence of similar incident as appeared in the privileged speech of Honorable Allah, in the future transactions, the urgency of this matter is highly recommended in order to reach the attention of the higher authorities. In view of that, Madam Chair, I move that item number five and six be approved on second and final reading, weaving section 48.5 and section 38.3 of the internal rules of this Sanggunean, Madam Chair.
Okay, again, uh.
On joint sponsorship, Madam Chair.
Again, due to reasons expressed by the proponent, uh, it has been moved for a second final reading, uh, weaving the section 48-5, uh, point five, and section 38.3 of the internal rules of this Sanggunean on joint sponsorship. Any comments, reaction? There being none, so the motion is heard by approved. Next, please.
I, I think, uh, Madam Chair, I cannot do otherwise except to, to adjourn.
Yes. Other matters? Yes, Bourbon Bay, uh, Disina Committee, yes. Two, two subject matter, number six and seven?
Uh, yes, uh, Madam Chairman.
Number six resolution and number seven.
So under the, uh, committee report, uh, number, uh.
04-21?
Uh, yes, Madam Chairman, items six and seven.
Yeah.
So, Madam Chairman, I, uh, therefore move for the approval, uh, the proposed resolution authorizing the provincial governor Philip Titan on behalf, on behalf of the provincial government of Misamis Occidental to enter into a con, a memorandum of agreement between the municipality of, uh, Bonivasio, represented by its, uh, mayor, municipal mayor, Honorable Samson Ardoman Hope, for the regulation and imposition of sand and gravel be for all sand and gravel materials brought into the province of Misamis Occidental. And item number three, a resolution authorizing the provincial governor Philip Titan on behalf of the provincial government of Misamis Occidental to enter into a memorandum of agreement between the municipality of Sapang Delaga, represented by its, uh, municipal mayor, Honorable Donji Di Animas, for the regulation and imposition of sand and gravel be for all sand and gravel materials brought into the province of Misamis Occidental. So may I ask permission from the Chair to, an omnibus motion, Madam Chairman? On resolution authority?
Item numbers, uh.
So I'd like to move for the approval on second and final reading, uh, on the two items, Madam Chairman, treated separately, on joint sponsorship, Madam Chairman.
Board, item number seven is an ordinance.
Number six pa?
Two items?
Ayah, number six, two items.
Okay, the motion is heard by approved for second and final reading, uh, weaving the pertinent tools of this Sanggunean. Any comments, reaction? Hearing none, so the motion is heard by approved.
Thank you, uh, Madam Chairman, on item number seven, uh, an ordinance, uh, weaving the payment of interest, surcharges, and penalties of real property taxes and other provincial taxes for the taxable year 2021 in the province of Misamis Occidental until December 31, 2021, Madam Chairman. Uh, this ordinance authored by, uh, Board Member Agnes, uh, Civilian Naiba. So, uh, therefore move, in behalf of the author, Madam Chairman, I therefore move for the approval and second reading, uh, with reservation, Madam Chairman.
Okay, for subject matter number seven, Honorable Tito Disina moved for adoption, uh, moved for second reading with reservation. Any comments, reaction? Hearing none, so the motion is heard by approved. On joint sponsorship?
Yes, Madam Chairman.
On joint sponsorship.
So thank you, and I therefore move again, uh, for the approval, uh, the third and final reading, uh, the proposed ordinance, Madam Chairman, for joint sponsorship again.
Again, on joint sponsorship, that the said, uh, ordinance be approved on third and final reading, weaving the pertinent tools of this Sanggunean.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
On joint sponsorship.
Madam Chair, I would like to reiterate that, uh, considering that Board Member Waminal has already seconded my motion to adjourn, I do not like to be scolded by him. So may we proceed now to the adjournment, Madam Chair?
Okay, the Majority Floor Leader moved for the adjournment of our regular session.